Good evening. Glad to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's Work Session for May 1st, 2023. If you would please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father God be thanking, praise you for this day. We give you thanks and for your many, many blessings. And we ask your continued blessing upon our school system, our students, and our staff. And in thy Lord, we continue to ask your blessings this week as they prepare to take the Georgia Milestone Test. We ask your blessings upon them that they will be successful. These blessings we ask in your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, citizens address the board. Okay, item four, it's approval of the work session agenda. Our agenda items before us, could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McOver, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. McDonald. Are there some favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right, item number five is items of information from Dr. Coolus.
Good evening, everyone. Most of the information in item A, goal area one, student success, has to do with dates. So that everybody's aware, we start off with the baccalaureate ceremony that will be held at the high school on Thursday, June the first, 7:00 p.m. Graduation is the following Friday, and that is starting at eight o'clock. It's scheduled right now for the football field. Cat's Whittle Ceremony, these are a little out of order, but there's a purpose for that. Cat's Whittle Ceremony is scheduled for next Monday, right here, just like we did last year. That'll start at 6:00 p.m. We will recognize our spelling bee winners that evening as well. That's also on Monday, May the 8th, 6:00 p.m. Just so everybody's aware, we have the Todd Grant Award Ceremony scheduled for Friday, May 26th, starting at 8:30. And we have the middle school ceremonies on May the 30th. That's a Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. The high school holds their ceremony based on grades, so ninth through 11th grade will have theirs on Thursday, May the 11th, and seven. And then the high school seniors that are graduating will be Thursday, May the 18th, at 7:00 p.m. So if you put those all on your calendar. Any questions on any of those dates? All right, next item up here, organizational effectiveness. We have the annual budget retreat. It's scheduled for this Thursday. Holding that at the Hudson House. Will start at 8:30. We'll have a little light snacks there, and we'll have lunch as well scheduled for us. We'll go through the budget for the next fiscal year. We schedule the retirement ceremony for Monday, June the 5th, at 5:30. And we'd start out there. We recognize, we have three right now who are retiring. We'll recognize them, and then we'll step forward and we'll pick up on the board meeting. If I could ask, Mr. McNair, Dr. Chandler. Dr. Chandler has been a huge asset for this community, as well as, I think you cover Glynn and Camden as well? Anyone else? Okay, all right. If you don't mind, Ms. McNair, could you just tell them a little bit about what you do again, Dr. Chandler, so everybody's aware?
Thank you guys for taking the time to speak. My name is Dr. Chandler. I'm the CEO at Coastal Community Health. Coastal Community Health is what's called a federally qualified health center. We are over, literally, there's over 300 plus of us across Georgia, thousands of us across the United States. We're our own entity, but we have a collective group at the federal level. We get some federal funds to support our operations, which allow us to see those who are underinsured or have no insurance. So we do that through a sliding scale, and in some cases for free. We offer primary care, mental health, dental. We just opened our pharmacy. Our pharmacy is really unique. It's what's called a 340B pharmacy, which means we get it for pennies on the dollar, lower than your Walmart and other places. And that was a federal mandate that was put in place so we can provide it in communities of this nature. And then, should I go in?
Dr. Chandler was part of our collaborative that we had last week on the 25th. We had what's called the Georgia School-Based Behavioral Health Policy Collaborative. And we had some visitors come in from the Carter Center. They were Dr. Eve Byrd, who was over, she's the Director of Policy and Program Direction for the Carter Center. And we also had Ms. Tara Calk, who's our Program Manager. At this collaborative, we all got together last Tuesday morning, and it was a full day. It was a full day of us discussing some of the challenges that we're having here in McIntosh related to mental health and school-based health, and how to get that going in this environment. We also had our coastal community health partners. We had visitors from Resilient Georgia, Georgia Voices, Georgia Appleseed, Gateway and Apex, and also First District Risa. So it was a well-represented meeting. One of the things that they did share with me is that they would like for one of our board members to participate in our next collaborative that we have. It'll probably be online, so I'm gonna leave it open to one or even more of you to participate if you have the time. During that, those meetings, we had listening and learning from the stakeholders. One of the things that came up, we had a parent come in, of one of our students, well, she has several students here in our district. And one of the things that she talked about were some of the challenges she's having with the facts, with the Sheriff's Department, with Apex, just trying to get services for her child, and that became more of a challenge. And I was so happy that Dr. Chandler was there, because he provided some alternatives and some resources for things that are out there that we were not aware of. Dr. Byrd, she also did the same thing. She basically was there to help us coordinate the resources that we would need moving forward. One of the tasks that was assigned to us towards the end of the meeting was that we were gonna start at tier one. What are we gonna do as far as resources? We were divided up into groups, and we have tasks that we have to complete at our next meeting, before our next meeting. And that meeting's gonna probably happen the third week this month. So there's a lot of good things happening. And like I said, I was very excited about the fact that we had a collaborative. We had people come in from around the state to work with us to kind of figure out how to get things done. It was a small meeting, but it was a very effective meeting during that time. Misty Berry was there, of course, and she shared a lot of insights in the things that were happening in our district. Unfortunately, after the meeting on Tuesday, we had an episode with a student of ours that tried to commit suicide. And I'm not sure if you guys are aware of that, but she's not here. She went to Memorial after the attempt, and now she's in the Atlanta metro area getting the support and services that she would need. So like I said, I'm very excited by the fact that there's an opportunity for us to put in place our school-based health center, which will also provide the services we need for the school-based mental health and the behavior health that will go along with that. So I'm not gonna talk much more about it. Like I said, I would love for you all to be a part of that collaborative if you have time. I'll make sure you get the information when I get it about the next meeting. But I wanted to make sure Dr. Chandler was here to talk about, more about the school-based health center. Kind of alluded to it last week about where we were going. Might as well hear from the man.
Thank you guys. And I, Dr. Coolus gave out some information there earlier. So I took on this position about roughly two years ago. And the first individual I met was Dr. Coolus, who has engaged about school-based clinics and how it's beneficial to the communities. And we've been kind of figuring that out. Two years ago, we had two clinics, and since then, we've now expanded into the jail. We provide all the service for Sheriff Jump at the jail in Glane County. And that came out of conversations about mental health, because many of the individuals who are going in the jails is because they don't have access to mental health, substance abuse, et cetera. So how can we get in the moment to capture those individuals, provide them the care they need? So when they leave, at that point, they can continue and have care with us. In many ways, it's the same concept with school-based clinics. You know, students are here, and they're experiencing so many different things, whether it's at home, socially, and otherwise. We have an opportunity to care for them in this moment. Not only do the students get assistance, but so too do the teachers. We can provide care, just like the regular primary care. They can get the assistance they need. Equally medication, as I mentioned, we have the means to have the medication locked up, provided on hand. As you noticed in the notes I sent out, the whole point is to remove those barriers. So right now, if someone gets sick, you pull them out of class, and maybe you have to call mom or dad. They have to pull them out of the room. They have to get work, pull the child out of school. And you know, for communities that are already struggling, that can be a serious factor. So we can alleviate a lot of that. The beauty of it is that we're not doing anything new. It's proven, it's tested, as you can see the map across Georgia. There are over 75-plus schools, school-based programs already in the state, and countless across the United States. We recently, and I, Dr. Coolus, said, hey, it finally came out. We've been waiting for a grant opportunity at the federal level. And we said, hey, we're gonna go ahead and apply for this, because if we get it, we can get up to $350,000 annually to support this. So when I talk about that, the importance about doing it with us as opposed to individually is, you know, the government's gonna be putting out, I think, over a hundred-something million dollars, a trillion million dollars, to support school-based clinics that will go to the individual school board. And so he is working with our collaborative at the state level to have us do it, because we have the proven record of managing it in the best means possible. Also, it's about sustainability. The reality of it is that most schools without partnership in this capacity cannot sustain and diversify the services such as behavioral, even bringing the medical team to do some screenings, medication, and so forth. So knowing this is worthwhile, and seeing what this community has meant to so many of us, we went ahead and put the money up front for it. It costs us $28,000 to get a grant writer to do it, which we thought was worthwhile for our community. When I think about a year ago, when I came into this meeting, we hear about children who are hiding and embarrassing what they're experiencing. We felt it was worthwhile investing our community in a little after this grant. We just hit submit on it today. Hopefully, we hear something back by summer. All those important plans will be able to build in September. And again, the key there is sustainability, and there are ways that we can get ongoing funding that may again alleviate some of the existing funds to utilize in other areas to solve good matters outside of healthcare. Again, if you notice, I must say that this is not new for me. Prior to coming here, I managed 17 clinics in middle Georgia. I managed three, two school-based clinics, one in Washington County, the Sandersville area. I started one in Hancock County just before I left, and that just, they finally just got that up and running. And then in Baldwin, in Milledgeville, with the program up there, we were able to, when the pandemic hit, we were able to service over 200 teachers being vaccinated at times, those who wanted to be vaccinated. But the key to that is we're underground. It's like in Glane County, they call me all the time, and they say, hey, we want physicals. Hey, we want to do flu shots. Hey, we want this. It's kind of after the fact. And what we're trying to do is be proactive as opposed to reactive. So I'm really excited to be with the possibility of this. And welcome to answer any questions you may have as it relates to school-based. I do want to say one last thing that's often confused. The rights of the parent exist here. So I think the way the process usually works is that, through registration, all this information is sent out to the families as educational sessions. And parents sign off if they approve, like, school nurse, or to work alone and see their child. In some cases, we can be totally helpless. But the reality of the parents is still involved, so we're gonna be back there as well. Any questions that I may want to say as regards to student surveillance, or anything we can do? Lastly, you know, when that comes to that parent and how devastated she was, it kind of did break my heart, because right now, we are pretty much the provider of choice in all of McIntosh County. And that was intentional through my board and I, to ensure that these rural areas have the care that they deserve. We opened 100,000, and then just opened one right on the corner there. No one really should have to choose between food or their rent, and go afford their care. And again, our flexibility and our strong relationship with hospital and others, we're able to coordinate care so individuals can get where they need to get in time. Because that is the sort of struggle here in rural areas, and you are hospitals that don't have the capacity with certain specialty care. But we have a phenomenal relationship with them, and I think that's been our process along.
Dr. Chandler, do you take emergencies and walk-ins?
Yeah, so that's the beauty of the school-based program here is it's your, you can sit there and see no one, and do everything, and be everyone's healthy. Otherwise, just being able to see them in walk-ins. And our clinics outside of here, we also take walk-ins. But like I said, of course, it's not an urgent care. If you're willing to show up and wait, then we will see you. If someone has an existing point, we're gonna, somebody's gonna be out.
Gotcha.
Just to clarify something, Dr. Chandler, you and I have been in discussion about this for two years. And I appreciate your support and your professionalism, because without your support and willingness to invest in that study, we wouldn't be this far along. There are a couple places that I think that we're looking at the potential of. We have four rooms over at Oak Road by the boys and girls side that are empty, ready to go if somebody decides to do that. Possibility of using the annex over here, or then just making space at Todd Grant. But this is for students and our staff and faculty.
Yes.
It's not for people to come from outside in. This is truly just for our folks. We're not, we're not looking for people to walk off the street and say, hi, I need to go see the clinic, correct?
Correct. Because they can come to any of our other clinics, through the real ones we have here in McIntosh County. Currently, it's really interesting, because McIntosh County is the only place we have a group clinic. You know, when I was appointed, we saw the need, and there were conversations, we shouldn't continue this initiative. The problem is there, but we invested a lot into this county, opened sites and just figured it out. We'll continue to do that. As I've said before, long after I'm gone, we will still be here. And that's the beauty of work with a health center. Whether I'm appointed or someone else 10 years later, the school base would still be there. The health centers would still be there. And that's the sustainability piece that I can almost guarantee you that no one will ever forget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you taking the time to come talk to us as well. All right, so that gets us through B4. The B5, I would ask that we talk about that specifically in executive session and bring the details together for the board to make a decision. We'll do that in public afterwards. Discussion of April 23 financial report, if this time, Ms. Franklin, could you come up, please?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We turn to page one, general operations count. We began the month with $3.1 million. We had receipts of $1.7 million and dispersals of $1.5 million, including us with a balance of $3.3 million at the end of April. Onto general fund revenues on page 26. I just want to point out the property tax. We have, through the end of April, we have received 90.9% of our current year of property tax levy. With just a few months left to go.
We collect that through August as our last payment. And so when we did our initial estimate, remember, we kept Milledge the same in order to make sure that we received what we thought we needed. We did not roll back to the suggested one. And so we're sitting at 90%, meaning that if we'd have gone with the rollback, we wouldn't have been close.
On page 27, the total revenues, general fund revenues for the month at $14.7 million, which is 92% of our total budgeted general fund revenues. Expenditures on page 29, period-to-date expenditures, $10.5 million, which is at 67% of our budgeted expenditures for the year. Page 34, our general fund fund balance is currently at $6.89 million. Onto page 105, school nutrition, $396,880. Local projects account, page 117. Currently at $1.19 million. Page 120, the money market account, just over $4 million. And finally, the Georgia One Fund Debt Service account. We have East Plus receipts of $169,835. For the second month in a row, we have had a decrease over the same period last year. We had a decrease of 2.2% from April receipts. And current fund balance in the debt service account is $2.4 million. Are there any questions over there?
I would like just to mention to the board, we did some projections through next year for collection. And we're gonna be close to that 8.5 that is approved for the East Plus. And I'm just gonna make a recommendation to the board to look at that carefully. We initially said March for another ballot for the next East Plus. It might be prudent to look to see if the projections would show that we would end early, and you might need to vote early. Any questions on that? Any questions for Ms. Franklin? Ms. Franklin, financially, we gained about $6 million or so from CARES Act fellow money. And we're pretty well sitting with that amount of money still. Thank you. All right, next item up here, previous board meeting minutes. If you get a chance to look at those, have any questions of them, please let me know. Or Ms. Lane, to make those corrections before they're voted on. Mr. Moss, would you step up, please? We'll talk about facilities and number eight. Dr. Chandler, you're welcome to stay if you'd like to listen to the rest of it. Thank you.
Great evening, board. Thank you for allowing me here. Todd Grant Elementary School Gym Flooding. As you know, on Thursday night, we had a absolute torrential downpour, a true flash flood. When I came here about, I think it was eight o'clock, the water was at my, above my knees in the parking lot. There's a hydrant out there, that was, all you could see was the top of the hydrant. To come on the scene, the door, the water was flooding into the doors of the gymnasium. And in between the gym and the school, there's a small hallway there, and it was flooding in there. And unfortunately, our gym took a beating. As you can see here, as I'm walking around. And this is after the water had retreated, and we'd done a lot of squeegeeing. When I first walked in there, the floor was actually floating. It's a plastic tile that clicks together, and it had floated up. So underneath that tile was completely drenched. We worked with GSBA. We use their recommended restorers. They're in the process of taking out every single one of those square tiles, hand drying them. They've also started the drying process out. We've been running the ACs and dehumidifiers since, and if we wouldn't have started the very next day, we'd be in a world of trouble, because it's already starting to, you can smell the smells that come out of that. But they're doing a great job of ensuring that we are gonna be back up and running approximately. At first, we thought a week, but approximately two weeks, we should be back going. So that was a true flash flood.
But you didn't make note of that, that the water that comes in, comes in with bacteria and everything outside the street, which is another issue again, which is why you need to clean that stuff out. And it was already building up, and the smell is starting to dissipate. The bleachers did not get damaged, unfortunately, in my opinion. But they, the motors are actually off the ground. And so they have pushed those back. So it's gonna be about an area of three feet on each side. If we decided to take the bleachers out, it's probably gonna be June to get everything done and back in place. But the gentleman that's in charge says he feels very confident that because of the removal of the centerpiece, 90% of it's gone, he can lift up that part and blow and clean up as much as possible without removing the bleachers. So I tell you that only because that would be a huge undertaking to remove those. He'd have to have somebody come in, remove them, store them, then clean everything back out, and then to coordinate a time to reinstall them. And we'd probably not be able to hold anything in there through the rest of May, and maybe part of June. But confident that it's gonna get cleaned up. And to think about the number of little squares that they have to put back in place, and they're all numbered. So they put them back in the right order. And the cost of which is, and I'm sorry, Mr. Moss, but I think it's important to add, this is a project probably not to exceed $150,000. And so our insurance will pick it up. We'll pay a small deductible on it, but it's important to have it done. Any questions at all on that?
They clean up under the bleachers. Are they gonna guarantee us some moles not gonna sprout up in August or anything?
He told me he's 99.9% certain there's not gonna be any issues with that, just like he is the rest of the floor.
McIntosh County Middle School Gym Renovations. We have two pictures of the before and after of the gym. The gym absolutely looks beautiful. As you can see, the bleachers are complete. They're pulling in now effortlessly. The black curtains are absolutely gorgeous, and you can see that we have a beautiful gymnasium that we can be really proud of. I'm really excited about that project.
Our public will really get a good chance to come see that during the award ceremony, unless the board would like to do something separate. But that is, it's a beautiful project, and, you know, really proud of our guys for the work they did. But just the coordination, it's well-needed, and we got rid of the Thunderbird. Stuff that was there, so.
So is everything complete over there with the gym?
There's a couple panels missing that were in light switch covers and little things like that. 99% of it is done.
Item C, football field sod. We're all in order for our sod replacement. We've chosen to wait till after graduation. The Monday after the graduation, they will spray the field, and it will take one week for all of the grass to die. Then they'll till it up and add the topsoil that they need to, and do all the grading that they need to, and the sod will go down. And approximately four to five weeks after that, we should be able to be on the field and already have cut it a few times. It will be ready for August game 100%, so we're excited about that.
What about the camp that's supposed to be?
The football camp? The football camp, we, we told them that the main field wasn't used. They've got all the other fields to use. We knew that before going in, that the only thing that they would have needed that for is a couple seven-on-seven drills, but they said that that's not a problem, and they were made aware that before they even scheduled it, that that might not be available. So that's already been handled.
Cool.
All right, the sound system for the football stadium, all in order. The only thing that we were really worried about was the brackets, but we feel like that's gonna be in order for us to have during our graduation, and we'll have a great sound system. If you've heard the baseball and the softball, or at least the baseball sound, you'll know that if it's even a quarter of that, it's gonna be something really great, a real upgrade from what we had. What we had in there was not really speakers that really weren't designed for music. We had speaking speakers in there that you could hear very well, but what we've got now is gonna be able to really play music, and also you'll be able to hear crystal clear the sound of anybody speaking. Russ, do you have anything to say on that?
No, the company did let us know that if for some reason the brackets don't come in time for graduation, that they would at their call take care of bringing an affordable system for graduation.
All right. McIntosh County Middle School Fence Update. The fence project for refencing the middle school that's gonna go on the inside of the Oakley Thorpe Square is gonna begin this week. They're going to start drilling. There's a few holes that will have to be in that tarmac or the hardscape there. They're gonna start that, and hopefully by the end of next week, we'll have new fencing up, and then we'll be able to take down that fence outside of the Oakley Thorpe Square. So that's gonna be really nice. We've gotten two beautiful canilever gates. These gates are a real needed upgrade. It's been very tough for our crew to open and close those gates, but these gates are gonna open with such ease and be safe, and really nice gate system that's gonna go in there. We did go with a heavy-duty commercial grade fence that's gonna last years and look outstanding, in my opinion.
Mr. Moss, since we're on the middle school, I noticed on the way home today, the back of the lunchroom is, I guess it's a primer.
That's right. To complete the kitchen project, if you remember, that stucco was white and sticking out. And not only that, there was some severe water stains on that back of that kitchen that had to be addressed. We are going to have the awning put on, and before the awning gets on there, we had to address that painting. So they started that project. It will be one color. The tabby will not change. All the doors will be the same, and that roll-up door will be the same. Really unify that area and finish the completed look of it. Strategic Security System. I'm gonna let Russi do a little bit of talking on this, because we've been up and down on what we're gonna do. because we've been up and down on what we're going to do, but I think that we've come to a pretty good plan for moving forward. Russi, if you'll speak a little bit on that?
Here's the deal with Synthetix. Again, we have to have a mobile system. We currently have Synthetix located throughout the school system. We've had their pros and cons to it. We've also looked at Pinpoint, and I think Russi looked at a new system today. I've set a deadline by the first work session in June for the board to make a decision. I'm not asking, I'm keeping this on your horizon, that you need to make a decision on which program to go to. The state gave us in FY '23 budget, $50,000 for school, but it's going to be reimbursable, so that we have to do it, and then we get the money back afterwards. So my guess is, and I'm saying it's a guess, because unless somebody comes in with a better deal, Synthetix would be the one that we would continue with. It does provide everything. The state still owes some information regarding the approved programs that are out there, and so, you know, there's a little bit more information. I want this to remain on your radar because it's needed. Now, the cost of it is $130-some-thousand. That's in there as well for five years. That gives us the upgrade of the software, as well as just the normal maintenance or replacement of batteries. The initial ones were, I think, 30 or 35 when they put them in at each of the locations. We paid for an additional installation here, so, you know, we had $120,000 invested four years ago, and now we're back up around. Now, like I said, there are pros and cons to this system. There are. But at the same point, if we ever have an emergency that you need to be able to activate it, I would like for our teachers, our staff, our faculty to have something. Any questions on Synthetix? Mr. Moss, will you hit COVID update, please?
Again, I'm very happy to report that at this time, we don't have any active COVID cases. However, as I say every time, we still are taking our due diligence and making sure that our measures are taken to be clean and wash hands and sneeze in the right directions into arms, and all the things that we do for general health, safety is important, and we're talking about it. Don't come sick, temperatures, all the things that we did for COVID, we're just continuing to do, and we see that we're hoping that it will have a positive impact. Again, we've also had the air purifier systems come in. They're being distributed throughout the whole system. We had, every school had about 30 or 40 of these purifying systems put in strategic locations. We're almost done putting them out, and I've talked to a few teachers that have had them, and they're happy, even for if it's just a peace of mind that the air is being purified in some of those high-traffic, high-risk areas.
All right, can you pick up on the field trip reports, please?
Yes, sir. We have two field trips, overnight trip request for baseball, three, the baseball team, or the, let me see here, first is the track meet. We're really lucky that we have some really fast kids, and they're going to compete. So there's track, there's a baseball trip, and...
The zoo.
The zoo. So that's just to Jacksonville, but that's a Florida trip, so we wanted to have all those on there.
So now, just to clarify, the baseball one is a possibility.
Possibility.
The games are going to be held, but again, it depends on if we win the first two outright or if we have to go to a third game. So, but those are out there for the board to see. Now, they're this week, Madam Chair, and so I would ask if you would vote on those.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And I realize it's not on the agenda, but give us an update. How are we doing on the solar panels and the...
That's a great question. Today, we had a phone conference with Josh Barnes, our solar panel installer, and we are 100% up and running. We've been that way for about three weeks. We should see our energy savings as pretty clear on our next bill. It was really exciting to hear that on the very brightest of days, that at this point, our meter will be running backwards, where we're actually feeding power into the grid and getting paid for it. So I hesitate to say without 100% fact what our savings are going to be, but we'll see it next month. But it is 100%, and like I said, that on bright and sunny days, it's producing enough energy to run the whole school system and feed some back in for sales. So we're excited about that.
That's awesome.
Just to clarify, it will run electricity to Todd Grant and to the middle schools, those two schools, not the whole school system. But the other part is that those solar panels are strong enough to bring in 1 million kilowatt-hours of electricity for the year. That's huge, and so we're excited about it, and you'll see the savings coming in.
Any other questions?
I'm going to get them to vote on these now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's do this field trip request, if we could. Could I have a motion to approve the field trip request, Todd Grant Zoo Trip, and the MCA Varsity Track, as well as MCA's baseball? Motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Mr. Hewlett, any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, motion carries 5-0. All right.
Madam Chair, quality workforce personnel, discuss that in executive session. On to Go Area 5 Community Engagement. Ms. Sheets, could you talk about the Excellent Readers event that we held?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So a couple of you were there. It was a fun event. This was our second annual Excellent Reader, and we grew it just a little bit, which was the goal, in addition to raising awareness for reading and its importance. So this year, what we loved about, well, we loved a lot of things about it, but the moon jumps in the gym, those were a big hit. The animals, we will have more animals next year, but they were a big hit, and so our goal is to have more animals. But really, our goal is to have more parents attend and to get information in their hands. So we did that, too. We had about a 30% increase, I guess, if you will. We had about, and I don't have the exact numbers, but we had, if we had about 60 or 70 parents last year, we had over 100 this year, so that was good. We had a few more community partners attend this year, and I think Dr. Pulis would like, his vision is sort of like to do like the trunk-or-treat, kind of where we have a lot of the community partners come in and set up along that bus lane, and just to make it a really big event, which I think would be fun. The kids seemed to have a good time, and, you know, we were able to get a lot of information into, and books, books to the kids. Every child got, well, if their parents were there, their parents should have gotten, or grandparents or whoever was with them, should have gotten a bag with a book for a child, and then every child in Todd Grant was given a book. So we really appreciate our Boys and Girls Club partnership, because they provided every child with a book, and they provided all the eggs, so it was a really fun event.
What did they have to do to get into the gym?
So they each had an assignment, and I don't have the specific assignments, but the feedback from the teachers was that they were just dying to turn in those assignments. They said, "Look, look, I did it," and, you know. So they had to turn in an assignment to get a ticket to go into the gym to participate in the moon jump, and the assignment was connected to reading and writing. So, in case we're aware of that. So it was fun.
Thank you, Ms. Sheets. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so Earth Day was the 21st of April, Friday, and so just as a reminder, we had Home Depot donate little starter kits, and so we were able to give all the classrooms at Todd Grant a starter kit, and then the Forestry Association, Georgia Forestry Association, donated seeds, and they were for loblolly pine trees, and so they got a little class on how to do that, and they got a lesson on what Earth Day is. And then, of course, with Coastal Electrics' donation of the live oaks, and Mr. Perkins' donation of the mulch, and the FFA students coming and planting those, that event and dedicating those, and the restart of Ogletorp, the restoration of Ogletorp Square. So I appreciated the board members coming out. I know, again, a chance to speak with everybody, but it was a good event with a great turnout.
Dr. Pulis, so was. It was a nice ceremony, and I liked the history that Mr. Braun added, you know, to the stuff I didn't know, but it was good.
It was.
I've had a lot of people comment and compliment the fact that Ogletorp Square is being reinvented.
Which lends to that next part, which is getting rid of that cafeteria, and I know, I think I must have left it off here, but the asbestos removal and the RFPs out there to raise the rest of that and make that green and parking. It's going to be a beautiful area. All right, so, Madam Chair, in executive session, I have Personnel, Security, and Contract.
All right. Could I have a motion to go to executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Mr. Hewlett, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries 5-0. We will retire. Okay, McIntosh County Board of Education had adjourned to executive session to discuss Personnel, Security, and Contract. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Mr. Stragels, all those in favor? Motion carries 5-0. All right, Superintendent Recommends Personnel Report as submitted. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Mr. Hewlett, all those in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Had to add that in. Okay.
All right, Madam Chair, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we select Dr. Melissa Williams as the next superintendent and authorize the chair to begin final contract negotiations. I also realize that we have to wait 14 days from today to vote on the final contract.
Okay. Motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries 5-0. Board comments. Mr. Stragels?
Out of these Buccaneers.
Yes.
Ready for graduation. This is the final minutes of the fourth quarter. Let's finish out the year strong.
Mr. Hewlett?
Testing starts tomorrow, is that correct, Dr. Pulis?
That's correct.
So everybody get home, have a good supper, good breakfast, and let's, like Mr. Stragel said, let's finish strong. And congratulations to our girl soccer team for making it to the final four. First time ever done that in our very young season, or, yeah, young team seasons. And our baseball team, they're continuing to roll, so I guess they'll go down to Seminole County on the fourth, I think it is. And maybe they'll go ahead and get it done down there in two games, and then we'll go see where we go next. So, good job, all.
Along that same line, just realize that it's been since 2003, I believe, that we've had a winning season in baseball.
That's right.
And to have gone this far. So I think Coach Campbell's doing a great job, and I commend him for the job that he's done, and I think that he's got a lot more growth, and that program's going to go places.
Congratulations. Go Buccaneers. It's good to be a Buccaneer.
Ms. McDonald?
Well, I would also like to congratulate all of our students, whether it's drama, baseball, sports, basketball, football, anything that we've done this year, we have excelled in those categories and made a great showing, and it's done by fine determination from our students. And I would also like to remind the parents to please check the agendas, please look at the reports, please read your remind texts, because we have award ceremonies coming up at every school, and we have vacuart, we have graduation, we have Cat's Whittle, all these things your children will probably be involved with. So please make a note to check their agendas, check your calendars to not miss these special events. Thank you.
Okay. And I also would like to congratulate our sports. They're doing a great job. Congratulate Mr. Coach Warren. He's doing an excellent job, his athletic director, making all this happen, and getting the right coaches in place, and get rested up for the test, and I guess we have almost a month worth of it.
That's right.
Have anything else to say, Dr. Pulis?
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned.